One, welcome to the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Voise.
Here.
All right, thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. All right, the pledge this evening will be led by Ms. Creighton Smith. Are you able to lead us this evening?
Yes, I can. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the of the United States and of
A little lag.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'd like to
Just kidding.
I would like to remove from the consent agenda items twenty-seven and twenty-eight from the public hearing number seven and from resolution, resolutions number eight and nine. And I would also like to, for the approval of the amendments of the October twentieth, 2025, regular council session as proposed. I'm going to remove those, not, we're not going to have those discussed on the agenda tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, that motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, we have an agenda. It is now time for public comments. Your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. Yes, sir.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, four eleven Almond. And I do want to recognize a few good things, so I'm losing tunnel vision on what I'm usually on. But the new sportsplex this coming or that's going to be a good idea. And I think it's very much needed with the number one reason being we have a large amount of children in this community that can't get to Des Moines. So putting that facility there will put them under a different light. Also, what I just heard on the news about the Blacks Building, I think that's great. They both will go together as far as it possibly be in a motel. But all at the same time, I have to stay focused on the corruption that is here in this city, in the state of Waterloo, excuse me, the state of Iowa, as well as Waterloo and surrounding areas like when I was in Des Moines. And we need to get focused on that, Mayor Hart, because we have a different breed of children that's coming up. And a statement that Alfredo Parrish made while talking about Ian Roberts and saying it's not what you know. Like I have been describing that my constitutional rights under due process have been violated by judges. He said it's not what you know, but who you know. And that's terrible to come out of a person's mouth when you're saying it doesn't matter if you know the law is who you know. That's pretty much what he said. And during the time when I was living at twenty-seven oh seven Southeast Eighth Court, Jody Van Velsen, who was a National Guardsman and a policeman who was terrorizing my spouse. At that same time, down the street was Donald Piper's sister, who happened to buy a Yorkshire terrier like the one I had. Mine kept running down there. I come to find out the woman with the Yorkshire terrier was Donald Piper's sister. And as he was out on bond, Alfredo Parrish would have been his handler, being his lawyer, I would say. It gave me an unwanted recall on the fact that I had to intimidate this dude to quit walking past and scare my spouse. I don't know if you're familiar with Donald Piper. He was a serial killer. He was killing women in the motel in Des Moines during this time that I'm talking about. So the arsenal that our, this mafia is able to use, we got to put some clamps on it because it's not safe for the children that even are planning on coming here ten years from now. Or the next mayor and his family, if there's going to be one after you. It need to get this cleaned up and it's been going on way too long. And what I'm telling you is the truth on everything I said. I wouldn't get up here and lie. So when I say that about Donald Piper playing a part in it, there's a lot more I don't can't use in my three minutes, this other stuff. Tomorrow I have to be in court about my farmland. And I'm hoping that they give me more time because I have a, I'm steady looking for attorneys. And to close it would be a slap in the face to the state itself.
I have some good news here. The Grouse had a Halloween Spooktacular last Saturday night. We had over one hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred people that walked through the doors. Many of them said that they had never been in the Grouse before. We took up a donation box and we received over three hundred dollars in that. One of our goals was to open up this particular event so that people in the neighborhood, people across Waterloo would know what the Grouse was about and would start helping to support it, which I hope you all will too. One of the reasons that the Grouse is doing well is that it has some wonderful volunteers. And Dan and Pat Yates are two of those, and they helped with this Spooktacular. And I'd like to have Dan come up and just tell you why he is involved with the Grouse, what he enjoys.
And Mrs. Potter, you're representing the Grouse.
Mrs. Potter, trustee of Grouse Museum.
Okay.
Okay.
Dan Yates, sixteen fifty Golden Valley Drive, Waterloo. I've been a Grouse Museum direct, volunteer and donor for over twenty-five years. It's very important that we continue support of the Grouse here in the Cedar Valley area. It's available to everybody. Mr. Grouse had a pretty good idea when he established this Grouse Museum many years ago to preserve the history of Waterloo. But as most of you probably know, it's much more than that. It's an educational facility. Every school year, hundreds and hundreds of students from the Cedar Valley area and Northeast Iowa come there to learn and do things. Does a lot for the veterans. It does a lot for the community. It does a lot for everybody. So I encourage you guys to continue your support of the museum. And we encourage the whole Cedar Valley area to visit the Grouse and be a volunteer at the Grouse and support the Grouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We have always room for people who are willing to volunteer. We also have plenty of time that we can get people to sign up for being members. So that never runs low. One of the things I'd like to really let you know about the Grouse is we are trying to have more visibility in the community. We feel that is very important. So if there is a way that you can help us monetarily or by buying a membership, then you get something for your membership, great. You also have to be aware that we have a Christmas at the Rensler Russell coming up in December. You're going to want to pay attention to that. And we also have a thing called I See London, I See France. Grouse has lots of underpants. And I think you're going to want to go to that because I think it'll be very interesting.
All right, thank you. Is there any, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Megan Butler, eight one eight Cloud Street. And on October sixth, the city council approved the generous, generous and historic donation of the Hope Martin House at twenty-five hundred West Fourth Street. This house was designed by Mortimer Cleveland for Hope Martin, the founder of Martin Brothers and grandfather to the generous owner. We also have Hope Martin Park named after this Waterloo resident. And it sat vacant for the last twenty-five years, unmaintained. Looking back at the other properties that this same owner has, he's sold two properties, invested in other properties by replacing roofs and stuff. He's got about four properties he's invested in. He's purchased another property, but this one property he didn't maintain over those twenty-five years. And he has since donated it to the city. And I just wanted to urge Buzz Anderson to donate the funds to the city for whatever it's costing the city to take on this property, whether we have to demolish or any expenses occurred. I'm just urging Buzz Anderson to go ahead and step up and say, hey, I'll take care of that so the taxpayers don't have to.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rich Curtinbach, two thirty-eight Normandy and Osswell, Blackhawk County Board of Supervisor. Tonight, since the hour not on the agenda, I do have to state on the record about my opposition on this proposed development and ownership township area. I'm not opposed to developments at all. The thing is, is when we look at this, the biggest problem with this one is probably it's too small. Looking at the other developments that we see in Cedar Falls, this doesn't even compare in size with the fields we see that's happening for home development in Cedar Falls. I think we need to be looking something bigger here for the Waterloo area. But my concern with this development's two main reasons. One, and the first most important, is the subsidizing of developments, which would end up being direct competition with other developments just across the street. That I don't feel is right to be using public dollars to be used against someone that was trying to do a development without use those public dollars. The second part is trying to squeeze seventy-plus homes into this small area. This is a rural part of our community. They want, the neighbors there would like to keep it that way. When I say rural, you don't have to wait too long where you, you get the essence of rural Iowa in the air from the farm next door. People like that. Trying to squeeze seventy homes in a small area like this is not, one, going to be something that people are going to automatically think of when they come to look at a place. But also, these lots are only going to be about a third of an acre. You'll be hearing the neighbor flush his toilet next door, they'll be so close. So again, this doesn't fit to the neighborhood and the development in that area. So I guess I'd just like to express my concern with this development. Make sure people know on record that I don't approve of this and believe that a development like this should happen, but just not in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Renee Carson, eleven oh eight Vine. I just had a little comment that I wanted to make. You know, and I think the city is moving forward. And I would like to see the city to continue to move forward. The one thing we got to get rid of is this racism, this backbiting, this finger pointing, this blame game. And it, it sickens me to see people that's running for council seats or whatever, sit here, racism comments. And it, it just don't make no sense. They shouldn't even have a right to run with all this stuff going on. It does not make any sense. And everybody's blaming everybody. The mayor don't make all the decisions. He don't get a vote. The council gets a vote. And Mr. Childs, I feel for you and I hope you win your seat again. Because it, it makes no sense. But people have a right to live their lives the way they want to live it. Their lifestyles is nobody's business. And all this backbiting and all this stuff need to stop. We're trying to bridge the city together and you got people continue pushing wedges in it to stop the growth of the city. Everybody here grew up on the east side of Waterloo. I ain't seen none of you. I ain't seen all these who say they grew up. What have you done? Nothing. Some of them just saying they grew up, haven't done anything. Because I've been out there in the trenches, getting shot at and everything else while we trying to keep peace around the city. None of them was down there with me. So I asked them a lot, where were you? So this stuff need to stop. Mayor, you're doing a great job. Rest of you guys are doing great too. Y'all keep on pushing forward to make this city what it has been. Because I've never seen this much growth in the city before. And I appreciate you. Everybody, all front lines, sir, police, everybody. Because you're very well needed. And you don't need to be, cut your budget or anything else. Police, firefighters, that budget need to be left alone. So when you're talking about trying to redo the budget and stuff to make budgets cut it, leave them police and everybody else alone. Because they are helping keep this city the way it is now. Thank you.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Understand you just had a work session on Main Street Grant, Main Street Grant program. I looked back on the computer farther when I was going through it. And it's, it's giving away money again. But you're picking winners and losers because you're only concentrating on downtown. I know you want everybody to come back downtown. Apartments are going up, et cetera, that will bring some people back downtown. But there's a lot more city than just downtown. I go to Cedar Falls, I bank at Cedar Falls. I go through that Main Street almost any time of day and that Main Street is bustling because they have a diversity of different shops to shop in. So people come down there. The main things we have in downtown Waterloo are restaurants and bars. Yeah, there's a little diversity there, but not like Cedar Falls. That's what we need downtown to get it revitalized. And I don't like you continuing to pick winners and losers by saying that we're going to help downtown businesses or whatever, apartments, I don't know what's all going to get included in it. But I urge you not to do that grant because it's picking a winner or a loser. And the winners are going to be downtown if they stay. They might take the money and, and make some money a little bit and then decide to close their business because they can't make it because the traffic's not there to draw them down with other related, unrelated businesses. Thank you.
Wayne Nathan, five forty-eight Cloverdale, Waterloo. Mayor, this question is for you. How many hours a week do you figure you spend here at City Hall?
Keep going, I'll answer your question. I'll think about answering your question when you're done.
Well, I, I just asked you a question.
Is that your only question?
And I, I'd like to see you answer that question.
In City Hall, I probably spend, I don't know, maybe fifty, fifty, sixty hours, City Hall, doing city business, whether I'm doing events on Saturday night or Saturday morning. On Sunday, I have events. On Friday nights, I have events. There's very few people that you ask at work here that don't say that I don't put in the most hours, probably anybody that works here.
I take exception to your answer. I drive by on Franklin Street and I can look over. I know when you're here and not here. You're only here probably about ten percent of the time.
Mr. Nathan, if you believe, if you believe that I'm only here ten percent of the time, then you probably need to think about getting some glasses checked or something. So, so I work around the clock. I get calls at three AM from the police chief or the fire chief. I respond to people via emails all night. I work. You can say a lot of things about me, whether you agree with the budget. I work my ass off here consistently.
Well, I go by here at least once a week.
You can go by here.
Once a day, sometimes three or four times a day.
You can go by here all you want to.
And I know when you're here and when you're not.
You don't know anything about me. You don't know anything about me, or you wouldn't have said that.
I know quite a bit about you, Mayor.
Ten percent, ten percent, today I was here, ten percent is what? Four hours? Come on now. It's campaign time.
Latonya Graves, six zero seven East Donald Street, Waterloo, Iowa. So I just want to say thank you to the council for the great job that you are doing. There are differences that, you know, we're not going to agree all of the time. But when people say they want to be transparent and they're not, it's a lie. That's all I can say. It's a lie. So I took the opportunity to go on Facebook Live today with some other people. And I shared all of the positives that the mayor has done along with the council. So what I'm saying is, all of these positives outweigh any of the negative. It is, I have five pages. Just watch the Facebook Live and you will see all of the stuff that has taken place. I mean, I'm just going to share this real quick, real quick. Waterloo earns twenty-first straight national award for financial reporting. Again, Waterloo earns twenty-first straight national award for financial reporting. That was October ninth, twenty twenty-five. And you can see, listen, this is, I have all these pages of all the good things that are taking place. So when people say that Waterloo isn't doing well, we are. We are. I took the time to look this stuff up. So everybody else can look this stuff, this stuff up as well. I'm just so sick and tired of all the negativity. If we're trying to bridge the gap, you need to put aside your differences and tell the truth. Waterloo is doing great according to this. And it's been under Mayor Quinton Hart and the council. So when people have Facebook pages that spew negativity, that's dividing us. That's not bringing us together. That's dividing us. And when you allow it, what you permit, you promote. When you don't get on there and denounce it, and I've not seen anybody denounce it. So to me, that means you're for it. That's my personal opinion. But you're for it. If you're not denouncing negativity and hatred and racism and discrimination, you're in cahoots with it.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items? Going a second time, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I just want to thank Jessica for coming and speaking about Main Street, Waterloo. We're not picking winners and losers. That is essentially what she's supposed to do is to work and promote downtown. We all know up here that there are lots of portions of the city. But when the Main Street Director comes and gives a presentation on Main Street, that's what we're focused on when she comes and discusses it. We've had work sessions on other parts of the city as well. So like, let's focus, people. Come on, seriously. Sorry. Thanks.
Don't be sorry.
Mr. Mayor. Speaking of everyone focusing, tomorrow, there is a big day ahead of us. So I hope that everyone is going out to place their vote. Before you do so, I hope that you are making an informed and educated vote. If you don't know who is on your ballot, there are ways for you to look up sample ballots and call someone and ask questions so that you're voting for people that want to see Waterloo continue to progress, not put us back to a place that none of us wants to go. So I just hope you all are paying attention to the type of rhetorics that are being spewed out, especially right now and who's doing it. And I hope that you are not in support of hate in our city because it does not belong here. So make the right vote, make the right vote tomorrow. If you didn't vote today, you have tomorrow. That's it. So make it happen. Thank you.
Mr. Bozen. I'd like to deviate from the election just a little bit and talk about parking in the two hundred block of West Fourth Street. Recently, signs went up along the convention center that said no parking, six AM to six PM, except Sundays. And the, the store owners and merchants down there were, were upset about it because it's taken away available parking for their, their customers. And when I emailed, I emailed Bridgette and Kelly regarding that. And this was a two thousand sixteen ordinance that was, when it was enacted. But yet, throughout that time, we had parking in the two hundred block of West Fourth Street. And if we have good traffic enforcement, I don't understand why we still can't have parking along that area. And actually, it says both sides of the two hundred block of West Fourth Street. So I know it upsets the, the business owners in that area because it does really truly reduce the amount of people that can be parked in that area, West Fourth Street and, and Jefferson. So I would like to relook at that down the road because I, I think that it's really restrictive, especially six AM to six PM, six days a week. Thank you.
We'll relook at that. Just real quickly, just to add, the, I was thinking about the comments about downtown. And I've, I've heard this before and I know council has heard this too, that Waterloo only has bars and, and restaurants downtown. But one thing that I wanted to add is, you know, not comparing Waterloo to Cedar Falls, not about that. But sometimes I think we miss exactly what we have in downtown with comments. Because Waterloo has a brand-new remodeled convention center that's there where thousands of people are at. Waterloo has a nice sportsplex where young people receive training and you can go and work out. Waterloo downtown has a center for arts with the largest Haitian art collection in the world, also with activities that are happening. Waterloo also has a young arena. And the Blackhawks took what, they were number two this last year. We have a John Deere Museum. We have a Gable Museum. We have a Grouse, I'm sorry, look, Mary's like, we have a Grouse Museum, Grouse Museum District. We have an Imaginarium. We have a, a bridge with lights on them that shines bright and honors veterans. We have Veterans Memorial. We have Vietnam Memorial. We have a governmental district. We have a library. But when we quantify and say that the only thing we have in our downtown is bars and restaurants, I'm all for them. You've probably seen me at a few of them. But the fact of the matter is, we have so much in our downtown that it is even hard to fathom. But sometimes we overlook what's right in front of us when we have such amazing assets. And I know I missed many of them. We have a diversity of business owners too. So I think we have a, a really good downtown. This council has supported a number of projects here as well. Our Main Street Director is working hard. Of course, a little bit later, we'll talk about another culminating project. But we have some good stuff happening in downtown. I just don't want us to overlook what's right there in front of us. And so many of you in this audience and this council has supported those things. So that's it, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
If I may. I'd kind of like to first, first off echo what councilperson Nia Wilder just mentioned. I recommend everybody look into the candidates that are running. As a councilperson, that's going to be here after this next election. I work hand in hand with everybody on this stage. I look forward to doing it. And I look forward to the next coming people that will be elected. I know differences of opinion, sometimes where people wrong, where they start thinking that things are out of line. But the people should decide that themselves and make good, solid decisions. I think the people that are running that are on this stage have handled themselves very well. And I look forward to getting the results and, and serving with whoever is up here. So do your homework and So do your homework and please get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
I'll do the consent agenda first. All right, so I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one eighty-one bill payment for October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of two million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred, three dollars and sixty-nine cents. And for November third, twenty twenty-five, that amount is five million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred, four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counselor, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Jessica's up for renewal for the community development board, so congrats. And then also Logan Cinnamon, are you here? I mean, I saw the name. I had to see the face too. Congratulations. He is, will be to the position of City Forester, so huge job, and we miss you, wish you much success as you can join our family, so congratulations. All right, all right, let's get to business. Number one.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by XL Electric LLC for a site plan amendment for the construction of a five thousand square foot building in the BP Business Park District located south of thirty-two eleven Titan Trail.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing and receive and file recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance amendment to ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment request by XL Electric LLC for the construction of a five thousand square foot building in the BP Business Park District located south of thirty-two eleven Titan Trail.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just really happy to see that since plant, that since he brought this before planning and zoning, he's actually expanded and made it a thousand more square feet.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. All in favor? Wait, no, 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 no. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vois, can you take two and three?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notes of public hearing for amendment number seven to the Martin Road Urban Renewal Development Plan to remove a property from the Tiff area, and amendment number nine to the Sandmarnen Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to remove a property from the Tiff area.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to item number two or three?
When I was, Megan Butler, eight one eight Cloud Street, when I was looking through this, I noticed that both of these areas are kinda like on the, well, Martin Road's not, but Sandmarnen is for sure on the edge of town, and there's not really a lot of infrastructure there to begin with. And our city is already got a pretty large square mileage. We're about sixty-three square miles with sixty-eight thousand residents. So we already have a lot to maintain, so I'm just curious, do we have it in our budgets to add more infrastructure out on Sandmarnen if we were to incentivize development out there, or is there other areas of the city that we could be focusing on rather than adding new roads and infrastructure and such?
Mr. Anderson, I'm gonna address this. Thank you. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I think back in two thousand and eight, the city of Waterloo started to acquire land out in the Sandmarnen area, calling it the South Waterloo Business Park. We had a partnership with the L and H LLC, which is Lane Haven Farms, and the city has acquired about one hundred and ninety-seven acres out there, and we're actually going through the acquisition of another fourteen acres. It's already been approved, so it will be over two hundred acres out in that area for development. One of the reasons we look at this is we need large development sites. There was actually plans back when they built Highway twenty where they put a sleeve underneath the highway to get sewer there. There's been improvements made to the lift station out in front of Casey's to handle sewer. There's a good amount of water. I think it was a, Jamie, a twenty-inch main or something put in Shawless Road when that was extended across. So there's actually a lot of infrastructure out there. We currently have about four million dollars in Iowa Department of Transportation RISE money to help us build roads and infrastructure out there, and we're actually working for some potential EDA grants, economic development. It's federal grants as well out there for the infrastructure. Right now, we probably have about twenty-six point four million in projects planned to go out there as soon as we get the infrastructure and roadway out there.
It's a certified site?
It is a state of Iowa certified site, one of the first in the state of Iowa, which I think there's about eighteen or twenty now.
And with the state certified site, that means there were certain things that the city had to do to be able to qualify to be a state certified site, and that means that this area has to be turnkey, turnkey ready. We receive calls from out-of-town businesses or in-state or whoever that contact the state. The state looks at like fifteen to twenty different sites around Iowa to see the specifics of each one. Can it handle, does it have the sewer capacity? Does it have the water capacity? Does it have power capacity? And they take those and they dispatch out the ones that meet the qualifications for the businesses that are looking. So this is a very special site to the city of Waterloo for the future growth.
Do we have, like, is it gonna be like a industrial park kind of area then, or is it gonna be something with businesses that we're walking to and like, what kind of area is it gonna be?
There is zone BP Business Park, which allows for commercial and light industrial-type buildings.
I don't, I don't know if it'll be shopping. We've had, we've had major businesses take a look at, look at this particular site, so I don't, yeah, but who knows, but I don't think it'll, it'll be for, for shopping. All right, is there anyone else? That could be.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. This is actually for two through seven because they're basically all the same thing. But it says here that it, the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts. That money stays in the Tiff. How does that benefit the taxpayer or the school or the county? Because when that money stays in the Tiff, they don't get their share unless we cough it up out of the property tax money that we're, we're paying in. And I guess, I, the improvement is to see my, the improvement I'd like to see is my taxes get under control as in lower. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, and just to repeat, that was for two and three. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I think we got a little ahead of ourselves in public comments because most of the stuff we were talking about is for item number four, because two and three are just basically removing two properties out of, one out of each Tiff. I hope, I hope they understand that.
Well, he said that, he said that his questions were two through seven.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the previous, when we were talking about the development for Southwest, because this, this, the public should just understand that this, we're gonna remove a piece of property out of the Martin Road Tiff, we're gonna remove a piece of property out of the Sandmarnen Tiff. So, just to clarify it.
All right, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and can, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance providing that the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described Martin Road and Sandmarnen Urban Renewal Development Plan area in the city of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies, advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the set, by said city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Counselor, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinances.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, we probably need to take these separate. All right, somebody take number four.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That's for the amended and restated South Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item?
Megan Butler, eight one eight Cloud Street. So this is just us, another area. Sandmarnen was the last one we talked about, but this one is out kinda by Hawkeye on Shawless Road and stuff, or in that area. And again, we don't have a lot of infrastructure out there currently. We have made some improvements and stuff out there, but how many different areas do we need for large businesses to come, and is, are we expecting large businesses out here as well? How much of our tax dollars should we be spending on that versus other areas?
No, you wanna tell about how many, how many increment areas we have or industrial arts districts?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So if they could bring that map back up, you can see some of the Tiff districts. We have the northeast industrial park area, which has heavy water, heavy sewer, rail available to it. So you'll have different large industry prospects that need large amounts of water, large amounts of sewer, rail capacity. The map showing up there is Highway twenty. We have the Highway sixty-three, Highway twenty interchange area, which is kind of a mix of medical trucking companies and some industrial over there with the logistics company. The South Waterloo Business Park, again, having about two hundred acres there. So just to give you an idea, when we're saying large companies, the International Paper Project, which will be about a hundred and sixty-five million dollar, or two hundred and sixty-five million dollar investment by International Paper, which is a Fortune five hundred company, that is taking up about ninety acres by itself. So when we start talking about the large prospects, we can't put them into these other smaller areas. We have to look and have infrastructure in place for the larger projects. We also have the Waterloo Air, Airport area, Waterloo Air and Rail Park on the west side of that. I think now, Jamie, we probably have about five hundred acres under active development, and I'm not even sure how many projects we have actively going there now, probably, probably six or seven.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to comment?
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I guess my comment is ditto, but I just heard that about Waterloo Paper that's gonna go in the south Waterloo Urban Renewal area. I thought that was going out by the airport.
It was going in Warp, Warp Drive, Waterloo Air Rail, Waterloo Air Rail Park.
And that was mentioned after, while he was talking to this, about the south, it was mentioned afterwards, and, and indicated it was at the airport, but it maybe came across to somebody, first off, came across to me, that that was in the south. I knew it was in the airport, so I hope the people out in the audience and, and on TV land can understand what I'm saying, that, that was a misnomer.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the correction.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary to the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for rural, urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just for clarification and correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, just for the public, that, that this hearing is merging the Martin Road Tiff and the Sandmarnen Tiff and creating a South Waterloo Unified Tiff. Am I correct in that? We're taking two tiffs and, and creating a one large one.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. That is correct. We did a similar thing a number of years back for the Midport Airport Tiff and the Logan Avenue area. And what the merging of the two tiffs does, it allows us greater flexibility for options to get development to happen. A lot of that shows the success of the North Crossing area with the new infrastructure out there, the Veridian being built and all that. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility in how we are able to, to help development happen.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance providing that the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described and amended and restated South Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, State of Iowa, by, and by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county, Blackhawk, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal interest, principally in interest on loans, monies, advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
All right, we'll take up that item at the next council meeting for the second and third reading. So someone take number five. All that motion failed for the suspension, but it come back.
Right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, to receive, file, proof, publication, of public hearing, amendment to the downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan for the twenty twenty-five expansion area.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda?
Megan Butler, eight one eight Cloud Street. I really like the idea of this Tiff, this area of town. Many residents would benefit by having new developments and investments in this area.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing now closed.
Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an area of slum and blight and an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the planned, plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance, providing that the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within newly described downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, 2025 expansion area in the city of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, and, and by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School Districts and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest in loans and monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued to be, or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with the said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Sir.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Sir.
A motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number six?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the Baltimore Fields Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Do we have a map or something on this Baltimore Field? Isn't that a new one that we're going to create?
There you go.
So, it just encompasses a shaded area, which is Baltimore Field. It doesn't encompass any of the neighborhood around it.
Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. As you can see on the map that was on the screen, yes, it just contains the, the greenfield land out there.
Didn't we sell that to somebody for a dollar that was supposed to develop it? And that never happened? So, now we're going to see if we can get contractors in there to build houses or something?
City of Waterloo entered into a development agreement with Panther Builders to build out there. They were unable to move ahead with that, not gaining their workforce housing tax credits as quickly as they wanted. They now have the workforce housing tax credits in place, still did not move ahead with it last year in terms of looking at competing infrastructure and projects in Cedar Falls, where they're offering the infrastructure reimbursement through Tiff. So, we are offering the reimbursement infrastructure to Tiff to get them to build in Waterloo versus Cedar Falls or other communities.
So, this is essentially residential Tiff, correct?
That is correct.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Counsel, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance, providing that the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the described Baltimore Fields Urban Renewal Area in the city of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city, by said city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, that's three, four.
That was three, four.
All right, well, that one fails.
It passed.
It passed.
Three, four. It was four, three.
Four, three.
Four, three no's.
I thought there were four no's.
Just him, these, right here.
He voted no.
He voted no?
Wait, it was one? Okay.
Two, three.
All right.
Three, four.
There we go. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll bring that back. Number eight, please.
Mayor?
We skipped number seven. Number eight, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and request by Robson Homes to rezone approximately 37.07 acres from R3 Multiple Residential Districts to R3 RP Planned Multiple Residential Districts located east of Omaha Avenue.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. I'm sorry, Rob.
I know how you voted, Rob. I pay attention.
Well, he said no.
Thank you.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item?
Megan Butler, 818 Cloud Street. This is behind Hy-Vee, correct, in Waterloo? Like in that new area? So, I'm just curious, are most other homes in that area sold already? And are, is the contractor planning to add anything to enhance the community, like a playground, green space, or any other features? And I also noticed that we need fire protection in that area. I'm not entirely sure what that consists of, but will the contractor be responsible for funding any portion of that neighborhood infrastructure?
So, no.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. They had the map on the screen of the area proposed for rezoning. The developer out there is Ropes and Homes. They just built Omaha. I believe the next road that they're under construction of right now is Mystic. I think they just took out eight permits in the last month. So, they're essentially building further roads that are heading north-south, just kind of continuing that design, heading easterly. There is a 1968 agreement in place from the developer of the land of Crossroads in this area that requires that the city of Waterloo build a roadway connection over the drainage way to the north when it is necessary. So, we are working on planning out that design with the developer. Currently, the developer's building all the infrastructure out there, but the city, as noted, the city would be required to help with the infrastructure heading to the north, which would meet fire code requirements. We could also head to the east. As you can see, they do not own all the land over to La Porte, and the connection to the north might be more desirable to kind of co-mix with the redevelopment of the Crossroads area.
But, again, this is adding more roads to our already...
Yes. Every house he's sold out, he's built out there, he's sold, so he continues to build houses and sell them, and he needs roads for the houses.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Mayor?
Sir.
Motion to close the hearing, receive and file oral comments, and the recommendation of approval of planning, programming, and zoning commission.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed.
Ms. Mayor?
Sir.
A motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079, as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to Section 10-4-4, approved in request by Robson Homes for the rezone of approximately 37.07 acres for, for R3 Multiple Residential District, R3 RP Planned Multiple Residential Districts located east of Omaha Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Ms. Mayor?
Sir.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, but at the planning and zoning meeting, when this, when this passed, they mentioned that, not this one, but if they, the next road they expand to is when they would have to create the other entrance in?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We've actually had a meeting with Waterloo Fire Rescue and the Fire Marshal to look at whether it's the next one or the next phase after that. They have three more phases laid out with the infrastructure. They will need to bring some sewer from the north at some point to continue to serve over there, so we're looking at where that roadway connection would line up to match where the sewer would come across. It's, so it's probably in the next phase or two.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to consider and pass for a second, third time, and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number nine, please.
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing that's for sale and conveyance of 420 Bayard Street in the Church Road neighborhood to Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity, including a development agreement, demolition agreement, and a grant of $7,500 for infill housing development.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file, or just close the hearing.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is now closed.
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of 420 Bayard Street in the Church Road neighborhood to Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $1, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity with a grant of $7,500 for infill housing development for the construction of one new residential unit, including a demolition agreement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take one and two, please?
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a second amendment to the development and minimum assessment agreement with B-12 LLC to allow for a minimum assessment in the amount of $386,610 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents, and a resolution approving a development agreement with EIC Enterprises for the relocation of the home at 3280 Newell Street to our property at the corner of Campbell Avenue and Long Hill Avenue, including an in-hill housing grant, $10,000, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. This is on number two. I see that we're going to give him $10,000. Are we just picking figures because we've gone from $5,000 to $7,500, now we're at $10,000? I understand that supposedly in different parts of town, we got to do different, but you know, there should be a standard that it's only this much and take it or leave it. We keep giving away more money and more money and more money, and does it depend on who you are or where it's at, or what's the deal?
All right, good question. Mr. Anderson, you want to explain this particular project?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So this is pretty unique. Going back to, we haven't moved any houses since I think Highway 63 was reconstructed a number of years back. We just moved two of them for the food bank. This is the same developer that just successfully moved those over to Chalmers Avenue to reinvest in that neighborhood. As a part of the, I guess, negotiations of making that relocation of a house work, we agreed to $10,000 per home with those two houses being moved here. So they were requesting that for this project as well. Obviously, with the removing of a home, that's pretty expensive. They have to build a new foundation. They have to hook it all up. They have to move the homes. So we're still saving quite a bit of money by not having to demolish this building as it's out in our industrial park area. This was part of the land and farmstead that was bought. I think we had to buy 70 acres for the new TVS, $14.25 million project out there. So we're basically helping to save this house by moving it across. But Mr. Dreyer's right. It would be nice. We'll probably need to add something in the policies for the removal, for the moving of a home. We just don't have that in there as we didn't anticipate it.
Yeah, and the ones on 63 some time ago, that was, we had $20,000 maybe around that time?
That sounds right. We were partnering with the Iowa Department of Transportation for some of that. So there were some funds from them to move them instead of demolish them as well. There was 26 homes that were taken out of that corridor, and I think we moved four or five homes total that were able to be moved.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Anderson, could you answer a question for me? So what is the estimated value of that home, or what will be the estimated value of that home having been moved from Newell to Long Hill Avenue, Campbell and Long Hill? Do you see an increase? If so, what? How much?
We can definitely check with the assessor's office on that to see what new value they're going to put on it. We had not got that number back yet. Well, I can get that to you.
I think that's important. Thank you. And I think the residents would need to know that as well, so they can see that this will increase property values in that particular area as well.
Mayor, members of the council, Forest Delaboo, 1725 Huntingdon Road. I believe this is a house that came with a large farm piece out there. I suggested to community development director that we, the city, take that and move it to our lots. Now here we are giving it to somebody and giving them incentives when we could have taken care of a community development lot, one of our vacant lots, went to the city, but I was told they were turned down. Community development was turned down to be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson, are we going to be responsible to remove the foundation, though? Is that going to be part of our expenses or the contractors?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. First off, we did not deny the ability to move this house to community development, just to clear that up.
I didn't ask that.
We work with all the other city departments. Second, yes, we will still, we will still remove the foundation for where the house sat out on the farmstead.
Thank you. Yep, I got it. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, one and two.
Uh, Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, number three.
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with 205 East Forest Street LLC, JSA Development, for the approximate $56 million redevelopment of the historic Blacks Building into an approximate 130-room national brand hotel with up to 25 residential units and commercial space to provide reimbursement grant funds in the amount of $14 million with no tax rebates or abatement, and a management agreement for the Park Avenue parking ramp with a new minimum assessed value of $8 million for the Blacks Building and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Mr. Dreyer, you can go first, and Mr. Deeds has a presentation he would like to make that probably could shed some light on maybe questions, but please go.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I don't understand the calculations here. It's going to be worth 56 million dollar redevelopment, yet we're going to give them $14,000 and only value, assessed value at $8 million. I just, you know. Is this in addition to the $7,500 per unit for the residential units going to put in there, or the hotel rooms count also? So we've got 130 plus, plus that other number to, at $7,500 apiece? What's our total cost on this building? That sounds like a good deal. The Blacks Building needs to be redone. I don't disagree with that. I guess my other question is, are we going to pay them to manage the parking ramp? Questions?
That's why I was going to have Mr. Deeds go first, but you had come up, sir, and I didn't want to cut you off. So he's going to talk about the project.
Yeah, I'd give him an opportunity to answer questions he wouldn't have thought of.
That is very true, sir. Very true.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, department heads, and folks that are with us tonight, in and outside the chambers. Thank you. All right, so James Black Dry Goods Company Building Redevelopment, also known as the Blacks Building, 501 Sycamore Street, a lot of different things it happens to be known as, certainly is a landmark. Keep this short for you. It is an important project. It's one we're excited about at JSA Development. It kind of indicates the next phase of our continued investment in downtown Waterloo. So, let's see if I can get this to advance. There we go. All right. So JSA Development's been active in downtown redevelopment here for nearly 20 years at this point. The company was founded by James Walsh, who passed away two years ago approximately. Continues to be owned by the Walsh family, and we certainly appreciate their willingness to go along in this next adventure that we're going on. So it's an important project for what we've been doing. We've completed over 20 historic rehabs in the downtown area, many of which people don't really necessarily know what's in the buildings after we restore them or rehabilitate them. We've got 82 market rate apartments spread across these various projects that we've completed over the last 20 years, most of them in the last 15. We've had a lot of experience with these types of redevelopments, the tax credits that are necessary for this type of project and so forth. It allows us to continue to do our work, and I think the great thing about this is, you know, we live here, we work here, and we play here as well. So we're here with all of you all the time. So we appreciate that. A little bit about the Blacks Building as it currently stands. We all know that it's the landmark in downtown, and I would argue probably the landmark in Waterloo. It's certainly the tallest building in downtown Waterloo. It has a long history, dated all the way back to 1914. It was the department store until about 1983. The building then converted mostly to offices over the next 10, 20 years, and then came into the ownership of a debt holder two years ago, actually. The building's about 225,000 square feet. For those that are counting, that's basically a third the size of Crossroads, so it's a pretty comparable size. I mean, it is a large building. It is 95% vacant at this point. So it is a building in seek of, in search of a new use. The assessed value is currently $3.5 million. In the assessment agreement, we do agree to go up to $8 million. We certainly could have agreed to a larger number, but we tend to not want to overestimate and put unsustainable amounts into development agreements. So that's why we've only agreed to the $8 million as part of this project. One thing I've noted there is its current assessed value is $3.5 million. It was two years ago, $4.5 million. So one of the things that you, if you do look at the downtown Tiff District, the large, I'll call them trophy buildings, if you will, or landmark-type buildings, are generally heading the wrong direction in assessed value. So it's these kinds of projects that are important to keep the downtown Tiff moving forward, as well as downtown overall. It is operating, which is great. When we buy buildings, they're not always operating. Something worse than operating sometimes. But we, it is functionally obsolete at this point. The building was, has been, as I said, an office place for the last 40 years. It will not be that again today. COVID, if nothing else, proved that offices are changing in how they're used. And in communities like ours, that's not necessarily the first and best use for this type of property. As we know, it is attached to the 500 space City of Waterloo parking garage. The agreement, to answer Mr. Dreyer's question, the agreement between us and the City of Waterloo to operate that parking garage is still subject to final negotiations. We've simply got in the agreement that we will come to a mutually agreeable agreement. So that we will operate that. The one thing that we, the reason we kind of, we, not kind of, we did insist on this is because if our customers that are using the building, the people who are occupying the building, have problems in the parking garage, we want to be able to deal with them ourselves rather than having to come over here to City Hall or stand here at the podium and tell you about all the problems we have in the parking garage. We're going to deal with them. We're going to firsthand, if you will. So some great opportunity here, great potential, if you will. So what's the investment is actually $57 million is the current number. We purchased the building on July 31st of this year, after a very significant evaluation period. We've been very active in terms of the next steps of the building. We're currently projecting 120-room, national flag, upper mid-scale hotel. We'll be announcing the flag sometime in the next two to three months. We do have that franchise secured, so there's no question as to what, that there will be a hotel in it at this point. So we've been making some great progress in that area as well. As part of this, the hotel lobby will be on the first floor. The main hotel entrance will face Forest Street, which is why we called the property company 205 East Forest Street, which should be the address of the hotel. The Sycamore Street address on the hotel, or the building will continue to operate, but will serve non-hotel-type uses. The hotel will take 75% of the space. The other 25% will be a combination of residential and some commercial spaces that are available for lease. We expect about 20, maybe 25 market rate apartments to add to the JSA portfolio, and then two to four commercial spaces, which I think this project will create some really great momentum for us. You know, as I think I've told some of you over the last several months is, we're kind of at a plateau right now in downtown, and we all know life does not allow us to stay at plateaus. We get to either go down or we get to go up. And this project is, the type of project that's going to help us go up, but it's also going to help the district go up, the area around this. It's going to help the small businesses, which to your point earlier, Mr. Mayor, are not all bars and restaurants. But by the same token, I like to eat, so I like to have a lot of choice of restaurants anyway. So I'm not opposed to bars and restaurants, but there are a lot of other different types of businesses and uses in that surrounding area as well. So some key takeaways from this. This is a historic investment in a landmark building. The other natural use of this particular building is one that I don't think would be productive for our efforts to get that trajectory to go up. So we're going to make this thing a place where people, visitors, come to stay in this great hotel, in this grand building. And we'll come out of that building to spend money at those shops and restaurants all around that space, and non-restaurant uses as well. It revitalizes this landmark, which very much needs it. It creates a positive narrative for us, and it's a great identifiable use. It's going to bring good 24/7 activity to this part of our downtown. It will have disposable income coming out the door to be spent. It creates a path forward for some of the other buildings in that immediate vicinity. We happen to own the one in the picture that's to the right of it, if you're facing the picture, to the south or east of it as you're looking at the map, that it needs to be repositioned as well. And we will, this project will allow us to make those commitments in the future, not in the next year, but once this project is done. And it turns essentially what is now a negative and could be a worse negative into a positive. And that's what allows us to be so excited about this project. Last thing I'd like to say before, certainly happy to answer any questions from council. I certainly want to say thank you for the folks in the audience from Irish Fest, some of the downtown businesses, from Main Street Waterloo organization, some of coworkers at JSA. I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but thank you all for taking your own time. We didn't ask you to be here, but we very much appreciate you being here to support us as well. So thank you for that.
And we have a few letters on file, too, that have been passed around to council, and I know the Waterloo Development Corp. had sent one in favor for this project as well. So thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this project? Counsel? Madam Clerk, item number three.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, congratulations. All right, could someone take four, five? We like applause, but, yeah. Four, five, six, and seven, somebody.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving a subordination agreement with FDP WTC LLC and State Bank of Cherry in conjunction with the Courtyard Marriott at Tech Works located at 250 West Field Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution approving an amendment to a development agreement originally executed February, excuse me, 21st, 2022 with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity to extend the deadline for the completion of one home in the development agreement, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution approving a second amendment to the development agreement with Debra K. Hodges-Harman, originally executed December 7th, 2020, concerning the rehabilitation of 1644 Logan Avenue to extend the timeline of completion to December 31st, 2025, and to remove a requirement for fencing and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And a resolution approving a third amendment to the development and minimum assessment agreement with 1515 Sycamore LLC, originally executed April 15th, 2024, for the rehabilitation of 1515 Sycamore Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these items? Counsel?
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
On number four, the subordination agreement, how much money are we looking at that we're actually moving to the end of the line, the bottom of the heap, I'd like to call it, as far as giving money back if there's an issue?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I may have to get to the actual number. I know at one part in the documentation, if there's an $8 million loan. I can't remember if part of that was paid off at like 1.4, 5, 6 million or something like that. So I'll have to get that exact number to you. But this is basically his second and third mortgages on there that we're subordinating, so we're nowhere near the front of the line as usual. Because normally if something like that would happen, the bank would take it over, and obviously the project's built, so the city's still seeing the success.
And this is the same area that we forgave two years of $200,000 and then moved two years to the back of the note?
Correct. That was the last amendment with him when he was redoing some things over there.
And then on number six, why are we, this has been going on since I first came on the council? Because we ended up with that Fairfield problem. And then why are we removing the fence requirement or being asked to remove the fence requirement? Because this has been like five years in the making.
The applicant is requesting that we remove the fence requirement. They did add a deck in that I don't believe was originally in there, but they're asking to remove the fence requirement and then, of course, move the timeline back a little bit.
Why do we even have a fence requirement in there?
As part of their development agreement, you know, again, there was a competition for this project from a couple of different developers. So in our residential development agreements like this for rehab, we normally have them list exactly what they're going to do to make sure that the council's aware of what improvements they're promising, and then make sure that they do them. And so they included the fence in there originally, and now they're asking to take it out.
Yeah.
This was, we were, this was with the Borwigg project and this project, correct?
Correct. There was another proposal to demolish the house and build a new one there, and a lot of people wanted to stay this house for historic purposes.
Saw what happened with that. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bosin.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes, on four, five, and seven, no on six.
No on six. Mr. Simon.
Yes, on four, five, and seven, no on six.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 10, 11, and 12, please?
Ms. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving a professional services contract with Shoemaker Elevator and Replacement, for the replacement of Waterloo Public Library elevator in the amount of $275,301, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a three-year marketing and sponsorship agreement with Panther Sports Properties, Learfield Communications of Kansas City, Missouri, in the amount of $15,700 in year one, $16,485 in year two, and $17,309 in year three, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number 12, resolution approving a professional services agreement with Pro West and Associates of Walker, Minnesota, in the amount not to exceed $5,793.64, in conjunction with the utility network readiness assessment and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street, number 11. What are we going to get for that kind of money? I see it comes from the airport, so is there going to be a sign out there? And when you look in, farther into the development or the agreement, it talks about one time?
All right, Noel's not getting the workout on this one.
Council Steven Kerr, Airport Director of Aviation. This is an agreement with UNI Sports. Mike Murray is also here with Learfield. If the board would like to hear from him as well. But this is an advertisement for basketball, men's basketball, women's basketball, and wrestling as well. The airport will have advertising on the digital displays throughout the UNI dome.
Okay, but I see in the agreement that it's only one?
It's one year, for this season.
One unit for the, oh, one season?
Yep.
So it's not just one event? It's, okay.
The entire season.
That was deceiving for what I was looking at. It didn't say season or anything. It said seasonal or season, but it didn't have an answer there. Okay, thank you. All right, and then number 12. Pro West and Associates, I guess I'm looking at this, isn't this something that Mid-America should know and be able to help us without, without having to hire an outside outfit?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. This is to hire Pro West. They do our GIS programming. Excuse me. It's to look at the condition of our sanitary and storm sewer data that is in our GIS and to look to see what it's going to take to put it into this utility network. And basically what that does is will give us a 3D model of our storm or sanitary sewer systems. It will allow us to make updates. It'll allow us to make tracings of if something gets dumped in our storm or sanitary sewer. We can trace it all back upstream to find out where that leak may have, that dumping may have happened. As council knows, our GIS is getting more and more important every day. This has been a process that started probably 20 years ago with me doing work in CAD, and now it's gotten into the GIS realm. And it's time to take it one step further and get us to the point where we have a good, solid model so that we know exactly what is out there. So it does not, Mr. Dreyer, have anything to do with Mid-American Energy. This is strictly the city's storm and sanitary sewer utilities.
My bad. Utility to me means the lights are on. Thank you.
Understood.
Counsel?
Mayor.
Sir.
I just want to, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I also had a question, or a comment. Megan Butler, 818 Cloud Street, on number 11. I'm just questioning, have we offered this marketing job to the UNI Marketing Department or the Athletics Department to keep the money local here instead of sending it to the $33,000 to Kansas City, Missouri?
Steven Kerr, Director of Aviation. The Learfield is hired by UNI to manage and run all their advertising, so we have to use them.
You want to come up and talk about what, how many people this is going to be in front of locally and all those things?
Hi, Mike Murray, Panther Sports Properties. Thank you. We are entering into a marketing agreement which is going to get us all the eyeballs that come into the McCloud Center for men's and women's basketball and wrestling as we get through this season. It's going to be television visible so that we are able to reach folks who are outside of the market area, who are able to then think of the Waterloo Regional Airport as a resource if they wanted to come into this community. We are also endeavoring a digital marketing campaign to where we will do an enter-to-win promotion, to where we will build a marketing list to which we can share with the airport, so then we can continue the marketing beyond the season. We'll get them into the airport ecosystem so that we can continue to have touch points, again, encouraging them to fly through our airport.
Thank you. You, you finished your question. I had the gentleman respond, so it's time to move on unless you have a question on another item.
I have another question about this one.
Can you talk to him just about it then, after you guys get done, so he can, so he can answer your question?
My question, though, is why are we spending $33,000 to market to our own people here? Like, it just feels weird.
It's like when people market local restaurants. They market to people that live in that area.
But usually the city doesn't pay for that.
Let me address that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
So, David Deeds, I'm here as the volunteer chair of the board, which, by the way, all city boards are volunteer positions except for this council, which are nearly volunteer.
Oh, you're back.
Anyway, we're entering this agreement. I'm current chair of the Waterloo Regional Airport Board, and we're entering this agreement because 20% of the, our catchment area, which is our passenger area, is in Blackhawk County. And we're spending this money to increase our capture of that catchment area. We currently have a very low percentage that we actually capture. It's less than five, it's between 5% and 10% of that 20% market potential. So the idea here is that we will market to the source of trips, on the outbound trips, and then the tele-
why they're watch, they're watching a UNI sporting event, so that they may consider making their trip to Waterloo as opposed to a different airport in the region, if you will. So it's trying to capture additional market share in Blackhawk County.
All right, thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I just wanted to say that the library's been trying to get that elevator replaced for years, and I'm really happy to finally see it to fruition, I'm excited about that project.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
I have to abstain from number ten due to business relationship, but eleven and twelve, yes. It's for Shoemaker Elevator, I've had a partnership with them.
Okay. Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you. Thirteen through sixteen, please. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution approving an agreement with Mid-American Energy Company of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and forty-seven cents for the installation of a transformer in conjunction with the LaPorte Road improvements and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Resolution approving amendment addendum number seven in the amount of nine thousand, ninety-five dollars with EN Communications in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, construction of a fiber-to-the-premise feeder distribution and backbone network project contract number ten eighty-eight and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Resolution approving addendum, addendum number eight in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and forty dollars with EN Communications in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, construction of a fiber-to-the-premise feeder distribution and backbone network project contract number ten eighty-eight and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street, fourteen through sixteen, how much money do we have in this thing already? How well is it paying off? Are we getting any money back yet? And what's the projected final cost of this? Every time we come into a council meeting, it seems like there's another resolution or whatever to, to give somebody more money for the fiber.
Jamie, you want to talk a little bit about just this portion of it with regards to the expenditure shortage?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, this is for InTrust to do some additional design work for the feeder and the backbone and the fiber to the premise. Basically, these are new areas that were not included in the initial build-out, so these are, these are new areas that have developed that weren't included in the original plan, so this is to do, do the design work to install additional fiber into those areas. As far as the, the funding and that, I can't speak to that.
So I need to get ahold of Waterloo Fiber to find out what we got in this already, or nobody here knows?
I have them, I have them contact you. We have one of the board chairs here today, if you would like to come up and speak, sir.
Rich Curtinbach, two thirty-eight Normandy, also on the Waterloo Fiber Utility Board. Currently, we're being told we're over three million under budget for the project. That sounds great, but we have other areas that are still being developed. When we did the initial build-out, it did not include what we call MDUs, multi-dwelling units, so each time that we're looking at developing them, MDUs, there may be a change order coming forward yet, so that's additional costs that we'll be seeing for quite a while yet for the development for Waterloo Fiber to those multi-housing or apartments, condos, stuff like that.
MDUs?
Multi-dwelling units.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, Mr. Dryer, Mr. Dryer, I'll have Waterloo Fiber reach out to you tomorrow. Are you, are you good?
No, I'd still like to know how much we've got in it and how much we're projecting for.
Thank you. Counsel?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Knutson, and I did speak to him earlier about this transformer, because I was, we were discussing how dark the new area of LaPorte Road is. Any timeframe that they, that they can give us on when they will, would have this in, and we could get some of those lights lit up? Once it's approved?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, I'll have to ask and find out, I'm not sure if this is a transformer they have on hand or if it's one they're going to have to order, but they are hoping, I know in general they are hoping to have this stuff lit up here in the next month, so.
Thank you.
Is that the, you want to just give them a worst-case scenario then?
Worst case would be Christmas, hopefully, I mean, it.
A month?
It's a month from now.
We just lost a, a hour of daylight.
Yes, you did. No, it, it's, again, we're on schedule to get this section of it done, which is currently up to about Motel Six, wrapped up this fall, then from Motel Six up to BOP will be done in the spring. We'll open it up over the winter, but that last piece will be done in the spring, so.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Somebody take number one?
Mayor?
Sir?
Motion received, filed, considered and passed for the first time in ordinance, repealing the City Waterloo Traffic Code Ordinance subsection A three, Commercial Street, Fifth Street West, section five-three-nine, no turn allowed on red light.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All right, questions on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You said we can do them all?
If you want to do them all, be fine.
Except the, those two. Dave, can you do those two?
Just two.
Yep.
I can do the other one for you, too.
Please.
A motion received, filed, and considered and passed for the first time in ordinance amending City Waterloo Traffic Code of Ordinance by adding subsection four, forty-one A, Segur Avenue South Side and, and Eastern Lee direction from Tiffany Place to section five-five-three, no parking here to corner.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the motion in the second for items number one and two. Questions on these items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion considering pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion considering pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, filed, and considering pass for the first time, an ordinance amending ordinance number four-seven-zero-eight, providing that general property taxes shall no longer be divided on certain property located with an amended Martin Road development area of the city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Iowa, or Blackhawk, state of Iowa, removing Martin Road Amendment number one area from the division of taxes effective July first, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Yes, sir.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street, looking back further into the computer, I guess my question is, number three actually relates to number two on public hearing, so we're combining that TIF, making Martin Road part of other TIFs to have all one TIF, and yet here, so, so that would negate the money coming out like it says here to be distributed to all taxing entities. So what we're doing with this particular number three is we're voiding that statement? We don't want that done because we want that money to stay in the TIF? None of the taxpayers will get any benefit out of this, again?
I can see why you have that question. Mr. Anderson, would you explain?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, so, no, this, this action is actually to release portions of the TIF that are at their twenty-year sunset. There's approximately ten million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars in taxable increment value that will be released, which equates to four hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Of that, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars will go to the city of Waterloo, one hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to the Waterloo schools, fifty-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars to Blackhawk County, ten thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars to Hawkeye Community College, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars to the Ag Extension, and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars to the Assessor. So again, ECONO Development TIFs have a twenty-year sunset, and so once there's a building built on those and they reach that twenty-year portion, we release it from the TIF.
Okay, seems to me like the Martin Road TIF years ago came into a sunset, and they expanded it so they could add another twenty years to it.
All right. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?